Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the board meeting. Please go ahead and get started. If I may sample, please.
Mr. Benaro, here.
Ms. Ree.
Here.
Ms. Grossen.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Pressy.
Here.
And before we get too far along, I just wanted to point out that Mr. Nether was here today instead of Dr. Barnes. Because Dr. Barnes was asked by the Ohio School Boards Association, March Association of School Administrators, and the Ohio Association of School Business Officials to please calm down to Columbus and testify before the Joint Committee and the General Assembly on property tax review and report. And he definitely wanted to make sure that he had that opportunity. He said that he wasn't sure if he could make it back in time. And we basically said, please take your time. We'd rather you were there than doing the good work that we know needs to have. So that is why we're here today. So right now, I would like to contribute to the time to to public process of presentations. Okay, everybody?
Do you need a pledge?
Oh, and do you need a pledge? So if you guys have some friends that want to follow that?
You might do a pledge?
Okay. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to...
Are you done?
Yes. Pledge of allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, to the Father who has sent us one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are first going to read through student nominations. And the first student nomination is for Maggie Rashid. And I'm just gonna read a little snippet of what her job training coordinator had to say about her. So as a first-year job seeker, Maggie has taken part in the Career Exploration 2 program. She has been training in the community at Greater Food Bank, essentially organic and Old Navy. As a first-year job seeker, Maggie was introduced to employability skills and learned how to work alongside various supervisors in her training. This area certainly is a barrier for Maggie, but she worked to understand the organization and how to follow directions with questions and concerns. During the semester, Maggie started her job rotation at Stakes Manufacturing and expressed that she wanted to try something that incorporated her interest with art and being creative. While working alongside her community mentor, Maggie demonstrated professionalism in her work production, her work quality, and communication. Both her community mentor and SEBAC staff noticed her improvements. Maggie is now working on Stakes software to check product design before the T-shirts are printed for production. She is the first job seeker at SEBAC to train in this department. Maggie is scheduled to work this summer in a five-week summer youth program, and her team is excited to see her progress. We congratulate and recognize Maggie as the April 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month. All right, the next student nomination is David Gersonovich. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read what his job training coordinator had to say about him. David has been part of the SEBAC team for two years and continues to experience the job exploration sector of SEBAC. While learning about potential career paths that pertain to his individual wants, needs, and strengths, he has performed selected job duties that have allowed for individual growth and maturity. David takes responsibility for his work and daily output and has shown positive progress. Up until this year, David has been comfortable in the PCs for People Production classroom, starting to recycle precious material from recycled computers and separate the components correctly. This is a delicate process that requires great hands, eye coordination, and other intricate skills necessary in order to complete each computer to a high standard. This year, David has progressed to the community location for PCs for People three days a week. This was a big step for David to take on the challenges of working in the community and setting a standard for positive work relationships and real-world expectations. Currently, David is exceeding expectations in all areas. David's mentors have been extremely impressed with all of his efforts. Having David in class and in the community is a positive for all who cross his path. He not only has displayed excellent skills with independence and problem-solving, but he also displays a positive outlook. Not a day goes by without David sharing his thoughts or ideas about improving his job, sharing his tools with others, and lending a helping hand. He continues to be a great example and leader not only in class, but also in the community. His path towards independent employment is bright. We congratulate and recognize David as the April 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month. All right, next we have Bartu. Bartu, do you wanna come down? All right, come on down. Sure, Maggie, if you go Bartu. All right, so now we have Bartu Hadaplu. All right, I'm gonna read what your job training coordinator said about you. Bartu has been a beloved student at SEBAC for six years. He's been willing to work at any site at any time, which demonstrates his incredible flexibility. But by far, Bartu's favorite thing to do is to learn about leaves. In 2018, Bartu arrived as a new student from Beechwood carrying bags of leaves. He shared his love and knowledge with leaves with anyone who wanted to learn and listen about his epic leaves. His animated spirit and infectious love for leaves is unparalleled. And he doesn't just like leaves. He is walking encyclopedia of knowledge about flora and not just here in the United States, but also in his home country of Turkey, where leaves are called yaprak?
Yaprak.
Indeed, in any country he visits, he makes the time to learn about the native flora. Through a partnership with Exile Tech's Environmental Program, Bartu was able to participate in classes, but more to his liking, be outside and learn how to mulch, plant, weed, identify, support, and decorate using plants. Bartu's interest in plants has enabled him to work at a variety of job training sites, which nurtured his love for flora and the outside. The remarkable people at these job sites have embraced him, and he's a treasured job seeker wherever he trains. At the Collaborative Life Center in Bainbridge, they named their hall fundraising event "The Leaf Party" in Bartu's honor. Beechwood's Public Swimming Pool, where Bartu was a volunteer, hosted another leaf party. Where the Beechwood Community Service Director Derek Schroeder saw the impact Bartu and his leaves had on people, saying, "It's just a pretty unique opportunity for everyone to celebrate diversity together, be a little creative, and really show self-expression." At Lowe's Greenhouse in Bainbridge, Bartu is a much appreciated job seeker, one they will hire once he has graduated from SEBAC. Bartu is a walking, talking leaf ambassador. Our lives are richer for having the opportunity to work with him and introduce him to many different communities. We congratulate and recognize Bartu as the April 2024 Mayfield Board of Education Student of the Month.
I'm gonna take your picture, okay? Just leave right there.
Bartu, bring it down a little bit.
There you go. And then Brian is gonna picture Bartu. Family, family, come, please come forward. They're very proud of you. Yeah, we are too. All right, maybe stand up. Bartu, put your suit in place. All right. Okay. And I would like to recognize all the Beechwood members, SEBAC, and the Hota Council who really truly opened their heart for him and made him feel so much love and accepted. So we are truly grateful.
As you can see, he is an awesome, awesome young man. All right, so we have two adult nominations for two of our SEBAC staff members. They are glad you're meant to be here tonight. They have commitments either to... There are children who are playing sports or coaching sports themselves. So I'm gonna go ahead and just read their nomination writing, and this information is already been shared with them. So the first nomination is for Mike Krenitsky. Mike Krenitsky demonstrates professional responsibility, leadership and team management, and adaptness in forming invaluable business relationships as a job training coordinator at SEBAC. Throughout Mike's tenure, he has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to professional excellence and ethical conduct. His dedication to upholding the highest standards of integrity and accountability serves as an exemplary model for his colleagues and peers alike. Mike takes great pride in making sure his responsibilities are met. In addition to Mike's individual contributions, he has exhibited excellent leadership capabilities in leading his team and keeping them organized. When needed, he is flexible and willing to adjust in order to support the needs of the entire program. Mike has built trust and open minds of communication with his team members to ensure students are making progress. Furthermore, Mike possesses a remarkable talent for forming and nurturing meaningful business relationships. Whether cultivating partnerships with clients, stakeholders, or industry peers, he has a natural ability to establish rapport, foster trust, and cultivate mutually beneficial collaborations. Mike's adaptness in navigating complex professional networks has been instrumental in expanding our organization's reach and influence within the industry is demonstrated by his twenty-year relationship with Durgans Manufacturing and most recent partnership with Swajluk. We appreciate your dedication to students in the SEBAC program. We are honored to recognize and thank Mike Krenitsky for his dedication and commitment to the students and staff of SEBAC and the Mayfield City Schools. And our next staff member is Joe Vandra, who is a job coach. Joe has been an outstanding addition to our team since joining us in the fall. Joe has continually impressed colleagues and students alike with her skills, positive attitude, and remarkable adaptability. In the relatively short time since Joe began with us, she has demonstrated an exceptional ability to grasp her role as a job coach, whether it be sharing her technology expertise with her colleagues, adapting to different environments, or mastering relationships with students. She consistently rises to the occasion with confidence and enthusiasm. Joe's willingness to take on leadership roles has significantly contributed to the success of her team. Moreover, Joe possesses a remarkable talent for building meaningful relationships with both colleagues and students. Her positive, humorous, and approachable demeanor creates an inviting atmosphere, fostering open communication and collaboration amongst all staff. You will often find students laughing and joking by her side and motivating them to always be the best version of themselves. One of Joe's most commendable traits is her unwavering positivity and flexibility, even when encountering obstacles or navigating unexpected changes. She maintains an optimistic outlook that is contagious and inspiring to others. Joe is an extraordinary asset to the students and staff at SEBAC. We are extremely happy she is a part of our team. We are honored to recognize and thank Joe for her dedication and commitment to students and staff of SEBAC in the Mayfield City School District.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nate Bischoff. I'm the director of Exile Tech. I want to thank the board, Mr. Treasurer, Mr. Superintendent Pro-Tep there, for allowing us to present today. First group of staff members that we are gonna recognize, I'd like to have Rick Zippin, Construction Trades, Craig Schmidt, CAD Engineering, Aaron Manni-Penny, MedTech, Keith Weathersby, Fire EMS, and Ron Succi, ITP. If you guys could all come down here as I do your presentation, please. So as we welcome down here, two weeks ago, these five accompanied fifty-five students to Columbus for the National Skills USA Competition, where they competed in various career tech-oriented competitions against thousands of other students from Ohio. We're happy to say that all five teachers had at least one from their program become a state champion, something that has never happened before at Exile Tech. In fact, out of our fifty-five students that come down to Columbus two weeks ago, students earned a total of thirty medals, with twenty-three of those being gold medal state champions. Twenty of the students qualified for the National Skills USA Competition in Atlanta this summer. And I just want to say this could not have been possible without the extra time, dedication, and coaching from our five staff members provided throughout the course of the year, mostly volunteering their own time after school for this. And a special thanks to Ron Succi. He serves as our Skills USA Lead Advisor. And I don't think people realize how many hours he puts in behind the scenes with everything at Skills USA, from logistics to registering to now taking nineteen kids down to Atlanta, handling all those logistics, lodging, transportation. It cannot be done without you, Ron. And we just want to formally thank all five of you for a great showing down in Columbus and looking forward to bringing home some national champions in about a month. So please give it up for these five. And before I introduce our Student of the Month, I just want to thank our Skills USA students who are up top. If you guys could turn around and give them a round of applause. After the meeting, I would encourage the more members, just take two minutes and head out there. Those are a lot of our displays for Skills USA that they won their state champions, as well as some of the Model One contests. So just if you get a chance, head up there and see what they've done. Peter Regus, come on down, Peter. So Peter is a senior, Mayfield Senior in our CAD Engineering Program. Peter Regus has left his mark in the Exile Tech CAD Engineering Program and Mayfield City Schools. Peter's a two-time state champion for Skills USA. First, last year as a junior, he took home a state championship in the additive manufacturing competition. He went to Atlanta in the summer last year and took home a silver medal, second in the entire nation. He also, this year, again, this year, he and another student from Eastlake North took home a state championship in the additive manufacturing competition. And once again, Peter's gonna head to Atlanta in late June to compete for a national championship. He and I have had conversations, and he is extremely driven to get that gold medal in Atlanta this year. So we don't doubt that you're gonna get it done. Peter's notable accomplishments include first place in the Leaf Umbrella Engineering Project in 2023, second place in the Twenty-Fourth Annual Model Home Contest of 2024. As part of the CAD program, Peter secured a summer internship for Ohio Ordnance Works, a company out of Chardon, Ohio that manufactures firearms for the military. He would be paid nineteen dollars an hour, twenty-seven for overtime, during that great experience this summer. He was also a varsity swimmer for three years, including individual WRC championships and various events. Peter holds a 4.1 GPA, currently ranked seventh in the class of 2024, and he will attend the University of Akron with partial scholarships to cover tuition. Peter's ultimate goal is to become a mechanical engineer and work on Formula One or Indy race cars at a professional level. We have no doubt you're gonna get it done. We congratulate Peter Regus for his dedication, commitment, and his accomplishments. If the family will come up and get some pics, please. That'd be great. Just go over, we're gonna get it. All of the family. Rebecca! Becky Gardner, come on down, please. For our staff member of the month, of the year, of the lifetime, it was a no-brainer to select Becky Gardner. Becky has thirty-five years of dedication and service to students at Exile Tech Environmental Education Center and Mayfield City Schools. I'd like to highlight just a couple of accomplishments throughout her career. She began the All-Day Agriculture and Career Exploration Program, otherwise known as the ACE Program, for APRA students with near one-hundred percent graduation rate. All told, she's been responsible for helping over seven hundred APRA students obtain their high school diploma and secure employment upon graduation. And let me tell you, I've been here thirteen years. Some of the most challenging, toughest of the tough kids, and Becky sees through with love, with love and dedication. She's been the Exile Tech Department Chair for the last twenty years. She has been our National Technical Honor Society Chairperson for the last twenty-five years, to which we are gonna induct one hundred and three students on May first to the NTHS. She created Women in Horticulture, a group that helps promote women in the horticultural profession. Founded the Feast, an annual Thanksgiving celebration for current and former students, which also incorporated things like fine dining etiquette, public speaking, interpersonal skills, even teaching kids how to tie a tie. Most importantly, though, it brought her students together with staff for a traditional Thanksgiving dinner every year the last day before break, to which we gorged ourselves at eight AM on all Thanksgiving food. But for those that have been a part of that, you all know how special that event really was for our kids. During her tenure at Gates Mills, Becky has witnessed three name changes, two address changes, and five different phone number changes. However, during that time, during the change, there remained one steady constant throughout the thirty-five years, and that is the love, guidance, and support that Becky has provided to all her students and families. The legacy that she is leaving behind will not be forgotten or replaced. Becky always wore her heart on her sleeve and exuded so much passion when it comes to the Gates Mills Environmental Education Center and Exile Tech. She is a champion for students. She is a champion for career technical education, and most importantly, for Exile Tech and Mayfield City Schools. To say that you'll be missed is a gross understatement. Future plans include taking time for herself, relearning piano, go back to school, work, I love this, work on my yard for a change, and a couple of business ideas, write a book, which I can't wait to hear that one, about her thirty-five years' experience, and travel, and most importantly, just enjoy the next chapter. Becky, I love you, you're a dear friend. Thank you for all you've done.
It's been a wonderful thirty-five years. I was an Exile Tech student too. I have to plug Exile Tech. It's success all the time. Get your kids to go there if they don't already. You can tell by the wonderful staff and friends I've made, wonderful people I work with. It's been wonderful. I'm sorry if I'm a little out of line. But thirty-nine years, I should be able to write.
Wait, can I get Ken and Kim with me?
Sure. I've worked with Kim for thirty-three years. If you mind, that's retired, you're trying to go. And Kim, like, twenty-four years. So we got a great team in environmental. Thank you so much for coming.
And real quickly, we're gonna have David Gersonovich come on up. So although we did our greetings already, I'm gonna hand you your nomination.
So here you go. And then more numbers with your name. One more photo. Ree, and then family. Can you see over here? Yep, we're gonna take one more.
Usually at this time, we go ahead and take a little break so that individuals that need to get home and study or have that opportunity before we go into the business section. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and get back to business. Our next order of business is Community Communications. Nobody here up talking is ahead of time, but is there any people watching? So we will move on to, while I will say, the role for Community Communications and all the final greetings this evening between Amy Regus and Ron Succi. Assuming that we approve that role, we will change. Okay, so next is President's Announcements. And we are in the home stretch. This is my favorite time of year. So just a couple of things to put on people's calendars if they aren't already there. May fourth and fifth is the By Card Showcase of the High School. May sixth through tenth, Staff Appreciation Week. These students make sure and appreciate. On May tenth is Plant Sale at the Environmental Education Center in Gates Mills from eight until six o'clock. Don't forget that Mother's Day is May twelfth. May eighteenth is the After Comp. And then we start moving into things that I can actually announce at the next meeting, but I'll go ahead and give you a preview. Options Showcase at the Mayfield... Options showcase at the Mayfield High School is from eleven to three. Cepac graduation is May twenty-third. May twenty-eighth is the excellence reception, and June first is the final event, the graduation. And the last day for students is June sixth. I think that's all of the enough aside half, so if I allow passage to the arrangements in my head.
Thank you, Deputy Chairman. Just a couple of comments for Dr. Dr. Barnes this evening. Uh, just want to report on our color code this evening with our equal. Uh, that was led by Mr. Andrew Tuchin, our HR Director. Uh, Mr. Tuchin talked about the Wildcat budget cycle. This lasts throughout the fiscal year. It touches the various categories of vision, purpose, strategy, implementation, and evaluation. There's some guiding budgetary principles. Uh, those are distinction between fixed one-time, continuous cost. Can only create one-time costs for one-time savings. Can only create continuous cost after continuous savings, and we have to plan out significant savings and personnel. Some of the categories in which we rely during the budget cycle as we go through staffing and strategic planning for the fiscal. Couple of other items to mention for Dr. Barnes. Spring musical, the last weekend is April twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. And May third is the Exalt Tech construction trade open house, on May third from eight o'clock.
All right, so that moves us to board member committee reports. Do you have any committee reports? I can say because I figured you were.
Yeah, President, thank you. Um, I would like to give one final report, uh, really a thank you to all of the individuals, community members, friends, Wildcat supporters who came out to the Mayfield Alumni Association in collaboration with the Mayfield Schools Foundation Top Golf Events. Uh, this was sold out again. Very happy to report that. Uh, this is the fourth year that that event has taken place. Uh, we had raffle prizes and just really overall a lot of fun. Uh, it's, it's, I say it, I, I, I say it every time, the camaraderie and the, um, the atmosphere is great. Uh, I love seeing these individuals come back year after year, as it usually is. Uh, a cast of, uh, repeat guests. So, uh, on behalf of the Mayfield Alumni Association and the Mayfield Schools Foundation, again, my sincere gratitude to everyone, every company, every restaurant, local business that donated to support this initiative. Thank you.
Any other reports? All right. That moves us to the superintendent's agenda, consent, and, uh, the consent agenda, items A through Q. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
In other superintendent's business, we have the Jefferson County Educational Service Center. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to mention that this is a non-loyal relationship with Jefferson County. It's not new. Provide critical learning services in the district for a number of years, and, um, she's basically a very, very old.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
And next, back to the main event. Uh, the class of twenty twenty-four, Mayfield High School graduate.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
Next move to the treasurer's report and the financial statements for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
And the financial transactions. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
In other treasurer's business, we have the PSI Affiliates Incorporated for Clark's Christmas School. Motion to approve.
Uh, I think, uh,
Oh, I'm so sorry. My favorite section of it is.
I'm not too excited.
Yes, I guess. Donations.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl.
Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Now, the PSI Affiliates Incorporated for Clark's Christmas School. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
And excess, excess of workers' compensation insurance. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Just let me, by way of clarifying, we funded our workers' compensation. Not part of the state program, so therefore we buy excess for stop-loss workers' compensation. In fact, that's a large workers' compensation fund. And a very, very difficult program to save on. I think we've been using, uh, global assault to, and often talk about the global business insurance.
Oh, I thought it was something people's work department. Access.
Excess, uh,
Oh, I got it now.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
And next, top insurance rates. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We're very pleased with this rate increase, two percent year-over-year on the capital. No change in the capital. A slight increase in vision, even though life's up one percent, such a small percentage of our insurance spend. projected seven percent, it's gaining it two percent. Every one percent deduction in this particular category of our health policy. So projections, but it's very good to the, um, healthcare committee. They are working with the unions because it's not something that we do elaborately before, till later. This is very, very helpful.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
Next, we have First Amendment, which is minutes of the regular board meeting for March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carl. Yes.
Ms. Greed.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Press.
Yes.
Ms. Pressy.
Yes.
Next step moves us to today's presentation.
Okay. Uh, over the past decade or more, this unit committed disciplinary upgrades. These upgrades have included new roofs, windows, HVAC systems, safety and security enhancements, and flashware modifications and furniture, basic warm, warm drives. During this time, we continue to assess and strategically plan our improvements that align with district-led initiatives and roles. Mayfield High School facility itself is approximately five hundred thousand square feet, that many square feet, which houses all students, grades nineteen, twelve, the district preschool, and Wildcat's four within this center. The facility itself was constructed in nineteen sixty-four in the scheme of, and we've seen a number of additions and renovations during its lifetime. The high school building has three HVAC penthouses. These penthouses are located on the roof when they were installed in nineteen sixty-four. These systems have industry standard life expectancy, between twenty-five and thirty years. This is a heating and air conditioning system that operate with fire. Penthouse B was served under contract to be replaced this summer at a thousand one point four eight seven million dollars. Uh, this location, this penthouse, uh, is even the highest priority of the three as it constantly leaks water condensation in the kitchen in its most typical pre-made kind of operation level. The existing equipment in Penthouse B is at the end of its useful life. Several units are known to have castings, I'm sorry, casings that have rusted through and are beyond repair. Both the air handlers and exhaust fans are not at consistent volume operation and do not offer energy savings opportunities due to recurrent system configuration. Existing HVAC system in the penthouse B consists of five air handling units with steam heat and chill water cooling. Initially, there are three return exhaust fans matched to the air handling units control building pressure. This is an area that we're already under contract to replace. It's not ready yet. Um, sliding. Penthouse B functions, um, serve variety of classrooms in the northern part of the building. The kitchen, cafeteria, the band, and oral areas specifically. Penthouse A and C. We have indeed several third-party, um, companies that have input from our, and feedback from our Mayfield staff and to thoroughly begin to assess Penthouse A and C, knowing full well where we're moving forward with Penthouse B this coming summer. The air handling equipment in Penthouse A and C is original to the building from sixteen sixty-four. Typically used for like the end of twenty-five, thirty years. Based on the third-party's observation, document our staff through the data that we see, extensive repairs and improvised field modifications provide a portion of their design capacity. Although the system currently experiences deficiencies, such as cool leaks, oil leaks, and various control issues, the current equipment is only operational as a testament to the staff who continues to work on it on a daily basis. Existing equip, the equipment in Penthouse A and C has exceeded its useful life. Several units are known to have casings that have rusted through and are beyond repair. Both air handling units and return fans are at constant volume, uh, which provides any opportunity for energy. Modern air handling equipment will be provided with variable frequency drives, modulate and speed to save money, uh, save energy costs during on-occupied nights, uh, with abilities. Existing HVAC systems in Penthouse A and C are configured with steam heat and chill water. Penthouse A and C serves remaining classrooms of the building, north and south gymnasium and north and south auditorium. Couple of business images to share for build, um, Penthouse A and C. Uh, you can see that there's some improvised gutter system to catch condensation so it doesn't drip down into the ceiling below hallways. Penthouse A again, there's some old, uh, mixing chamber, uh, due to oil leakage. And looking over at Penthouse C, deterioration of the casting has rusted through at the bottom. Penthouse C again, another gutter system to catch condensation. When those don't work, we got the gutter, uh, the condensation picture in the hallway. Various levels of ceiling tile, um, problems of quality seen as you walk through that, that corner. Spoken cost to replace Penthouse A and C had been developed and a replacement of both penthouse units is three point five seven, three point five seven million dollars. Another area that we began to look at, um, here for the past few years is the roof system on this large facility as well. Mayfield High School roofing, we had the entire roof at the high school firmly scanned and visually inspected. We had a report created just prior to COVID, which then was completed in the middle or the end of COVID, and we'll be showing some more of those, uh, that we did before. The area you can find in the red box, this is areas M, N, O, and T. Right through here. Uh, were completed about a year and a half ago by the late house construction. That was determined to be the worst area of infiltration, uh, wet installation, issues with, with the roof system. And we took on that project a year and a half ago. Back to the summary that we had done prior, and it starts to identify different areas of, of the building itself. And you can see where it comes across with budgetary timeline as well as years, kind of give us, give us a baseline of potential cost. This is areas roofing, uh, high school roofing area C, D, and E, over here. C, D, and E pretty much runs through this entire area, this area, and all of this area. Pretty big, main section through the center of the building. The estimated cost for the replacement of this section of roof, roofing is point one nine. And lastly, we have boilers on the property. We have four boilers. One of the boilers is pre-tuned this, this year, basically taking the internal content and replacing those. Uh, that cost about fifty thousand dollars. Three additional boilers operate this campus. They are also original to the building, actually sixty-four. Pre-tuning of the remaining three boilers, we spent their useful life for up to twenty years. The cost of this, including of the three additional boilers, could be approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is basic summary of potential capital improvement projects before the physical changes. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Snack. You've heard of all the sexy, uh, projects. One might ask the question, why were these not addressed years prior? Um, in those situations, probably like a home budget, there's always competing interests. We've always, um, I think focused on three key areas, program enhancements, I think academics, uh, infrastructure. Think this, and then safety, security, the world is constantly changing. We have been attempting to keep up with changing academics, changing the whole environment, and certainly taking, uh, addressing those needs in a prior, prioritized fashion. When I started here in two thousand and six, the OFSC, OFSC, the House Schools Facilities Commission, I'll say it that way. We asked them to assess our facilities at that point, prior to receiving this building, which was part of a, uh, when it was constructed, it was indicated that, that the practical library system never vacated in the district at first read refusal. So this building was added to our footprint, uh, back in two thousand, I believe, fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen, somewhere in the timeframe. And of course, when we took it over, it was a library, not what it looks like today. So it had leapfrogged new things. These penthouses, we knew were problematic, but we also knew the staff had the will and the needs to repair them. Well, that is no longer an option. It has just reached its, its, its end of useful life, as it's definitely identified. And so we are, what we are proposing, if you add all those projects, it's eight million dollars. What we are proposing to the school board is we take eight million dollars out of our one-time cash reserves and move it into a capital improvement fund with the express purpose of funding these projects. We believe internally that this high school campus is where we'll be focusing most of our time and our energy because all of our other buildings are essentially done that. We built the high, the middle school, which appeared a couple of years ago. We most recently been addressing these at Landor and Cent predominantly. A couple of years before COVID, we addressed them at Millbridge. Uh, roofing windows, so this is probably the last one we can consider to build. So if I could have the next slide, please, please. And I'm going to jump from here, this is simply the resolution. Please know that the board has already established this capital improvement fund. It is about two years ago in October of twenty twenty-two to then pay for the improvements to both center, Landor, or the, and Gates Mills and some of the latest projects here at Mayfield High School. If the money is not utilized, meaning it's not under contract, it can only move back into the general fund. In fact, there is a shortfall. So please know it's not a one-way transfer. It's actually a two-way. Next slide, please. This is hard for you to see up top, but what this is in the presentation, if you look online or in the materials, this does not have an impact on any kind of lovely conversations or any of the deliberations about when depth and spending begins. This is taking cash, a savings account, one-time, paying for one-time expenses.
This is taking cash, a savings account, one-time paying for one-time expenses. Though at some point, these roofs and H V A C, this will need to be replaced, but they have a thirty-year life expectancy. So what do you think in terms of one-time and then future planning, all that, whatever, hidden in the future? So the discussions we've had about whether it should be placed in lobbying, it'll never valid. Tonight's recommended action does not have any bearing on both of the current board with that. This is, and, and, and it's independent. The interstate, you want to have a cap, one-time capital reserves, making these much-needed facility improvements that they have not been neglected in this long time. So that concludes the presentation, unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to her.
The word on Penthouse, can you start to deliver? Start to, yes, and raise hands. Biggest innocence, excuse me, very out of. Now, we put a set to right, first priority, my person. This is I don't think that long, we should be over there by. Other one?
That's the area, cafeteria.
Serves that cafeteria, kitchen, um, so the coral fan area.
So will that probably be better, the title of your question? Will the penthouse be the second size or will it be future size? Is it more, is it smaller?
It's a great question. Initial intent is to try to make everything intact. The exterior structure that was not what was recommended. So we're going to hold it smaller, but we're making safe, we're not going to, we're not going to decrease the size of the penthouse. Same size, it's a great question.
And as far as the timeline for all the space to.
Sure.
Maybe get a little smaller case to, as I say, yes, take, uh, when plus a protective tag for ways to.
That would be summer point.
Summer.
So would we like to maybe build a big storage? Do you agree with the timeline if it's ordered? If it's ordered prior to any great increase by the end of the year, add that the timeline to deliver. Right. We, according to our venture, we come to price. If we supply change, pricing, it's a lot of price.
And our staff can take care of their problems every year moving forward. So it is, so we can act.
Yeah, we'll do the very best we can to treat us. Penthouse B was certainly the most troublesome for making repairs on, 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 etc., etc. It'll be more and more difficult at one, one point instead of trying, it's like trying to solder. There's just not a lot. So that was where our initial task came from, that we want to do a deeper dive on the system that's more that, that our facility. There's some, so, so, over, over deep practice.
Boilers will be relined.
They'll be relined and re-quit. We did one this school year, uh, and we picked them off throughout the next school year. Where are we getting them before the D C? Finish up this. Look, and you said we're at a point where the roof itself, it's on the tension under the penthouse. I'm just, that house is, it seems to be structurally sound. Um, it's giving that midsection of the C D and E, um, or the mid main of the building itself. We tackled the east side, if you will, um, a couple, a year and a half ago or so. Now, now we're going to take, take a shot. Would you like to take an activity, clean up that midsection that is just going to leave? Additional section of the building from eastwards.
I just have to say, who knows what the staff are doing here? Why?
Brand is, is. Yeah, they've got money out of those, uh, units. Four years, nine, nineteen sixty four. Forty years, four.
You want us to order this?
Uh, proving the. Yes, sir.
So yeah, so that moves us to the resolution to transfer additional funds into the capital projects fund. The revised provision, five seven oh five. We see, and five seven oh five point one four B.
So move, second.
Roll call?
Mr. Narra?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley?
Yes.
Next is the approval, um, capital lease for ten buses.
Owo, second.
I may just clarify, or just wanted this, this one. We have had success at placing buses to add volume to the approximately forty-eight buses we run on a daily basis. Not to mention the repairs that are necessary for things like edibles or what have you. We are trying to get to the two of a replacement locations schedule that will be four buses a year to try to like that job for a number of years for the bus life expectancy, ten, twelve years, depending upon the salt, the weather, the winter, etc. So by doing the eight million, we are going to move Penthouse B out of the, from improvements levy, which is currently being funded, bring up those dollars to address three key things. One is buses, the next are going to be new for staff, technology devices, that replacement schedule. And the third is to buy, um, textbooks, other construction materials. Like the science of reading initiative that does a lot of, are so graciously spearheading and reminding me about the costs associated with that program, that are not going to be funded by the state of Ohio entirely. So we're going to try to free resources to make that available as well, without impacting the operating budget. Which is part of the, that's the only impact we want to see. So again, it has to come on go here in the levy, so this is just us getting more in line with that question. So I don't think that I missed anything because he's been, we're partners in crime. I heard.
So these buses are brand new buses or new things?
Brand new buses that they're looking for three-year capital lease. So at the end of the lease term, we need one hundred buses. Or they're called stock buses, they're fully on, still on. So once we execute this, they will be in and perfect those at delivery. We have to inspect it, have our votes, uh, put all the corporate info on, like cameras, um.
G P S?
G P S, have them ready to go for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. On these buses now, do a home.
Yes, sir.
Those are my fellows. Ten, twelve years. Some people will play hate, we're focusing on a ten, twelve timeframe.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Narra? Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley?
Yes.
In other board business, we have P S C, uh, Westbury, we serve twenty twenty four, twenty five service agreement, motion to approve?
So move, second.
Roll call?
Mr. Narra?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley? Yes.
Next, we have the final reading of the board policies by, uh, Randy Roberts. So motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Narra?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley? Yes.
And last but not least, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Narra?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Pressley?
Yes.